Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our school committee meeting for this Wednesday, April 1st, 2020. There's no April Fools. We are all really here on video. Welcome to our school committee. I like to call our meeting to order. I am not going to do a pledge of allegiance because it'd be kind of weird to have you all stand up right now and that's probably the proper protocol for the pledge of allegiance. So we're going to skip over that at this time. But I will remind all of you that we are being streamed live on YouTube, which is being broadcast through Facebook as well as being recorded for future rebroadcast. We do not have a student representative here this evening. And currently on the video, I, the meeting, I do not see any member of the public. So I'm going to skip over our public comment and communication section. And just move on right to our superintendent's report. Actually, I did mention, okay, we're going to go through some mechanics here. So we're all on video. I do have the power to mute and unmute. I'm going to just ask that everyone try to mute themselves unless you're talking. I might end up muting everybody if we're getting background noise, but so far seems so good. Try to keep our comments brief and just, you know, with the video format, just give it to people a chance to jump in for questions because it is tough to talk over each other with these things. So if you are speaking and it can't be brief, just try to pause maybe in the middle of it to make sure everyone's keeping up with you. Any other questions on that? Okay, so without, I'm going to move on to our superintendent's report, Mr. Mainz, which I'm sure he's got a great deal for us.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. Hope everybody is well, everybody is safe. Certainly unprecedented times and a lot of anxiety. So my only objective today is tonight is to just kind of update the community as to where we're at with the most recent edict from the state where we have now moved our close school closure from April the 6th to May the 4th, which is the new target date. I want to, I did send out a recent mailing email to parents and also to staff. So what I thought I would try to do is just sort of go through it and I'll pause a little bit if there's questions on anything. I did invite and ask the administrative team to be here as well in case there's anything specific that might come up to a particular building, you know, whether there's an issue with technology or materials or whatever it might be. So the, the, the primary focus of the letter that I sent home to parents was about the issue of everyone being safe and everyone remaining healthy. And that our primary objective was to ensure that we were not going to risk anyone's health and wellbeing with this school closure. To the best ability possible, we are going to try to maintain some momentum and some continuity to the learning that our students are engaged with. I know that, and we can come back to this, but I know that our teachers and our support staff are doing a tremendous task of trying to, all of a sudden, going from face-to-face classroom teachers to now all of a sudden being online educators and also trying to find other ways to reach their students and their families. And it certainly takes us out of our normal planning, our normal activities, and it's really, they've done a great job and I, and I do want to acknowledge that.
Kevin, can I ask you to pause just one second? I knew I skipped over something. At the very least, I want to have our school committee members just do a roll call attendance for, for the record. So Brett Argle is here.
Lisa Brown here.
Kelly Grady's here.
Julie Mulder's here.
I thought I'd seen Becky coming at some point. Did she drop off or? I guess so. Okay, maybe not. So we're missing Becky right now, which I lost that. So, okay, start with that. Thank you, Mr. Mainz.
So what I, in the letter, what I stressed was the importance of everyone in the district communicating, constantly reaching out, trying to make contact with people. Because the, the one thing about distance learning is it can be isolating, it can be kind of lonely out there. So the importance of communication, and I put that in both the parent letter and I put that in also the faculty letter. And I believe that it has to be a two-way street. If, if, if parents or students have a concern, they should reach out to their, their classroom teacher by email. Or if they have a concern that they want to, they want to bring to administrator, they should email the administrator. Conversely, I've asked the teachers to constantly be reaching out and touching base through email or, or making phone calls just to touch base with their, with their students. I just think that that's an important piece. If we're going to get, get through the next five weeks, that we really need to be able to effectively communicate with each other. And I, I know that we've talked about it this morning in the admin meeting. I know that there's a lot of communication going on. But I would suggest that if there are parents that are concerned, that, that they feel that they're not receiving communication. Means at this point, let me stress that they should reach out by email to staff members so that they can get their questions asked. And I, I don't know if there's anything the committee would like to address to that. Okay. I asked the administrative team today that that they reach out to the teachers, especially in the elementary and the primary school. And if they would consider doing, you know, a short, one-minute, two-minute video, hi to everybody, how you doing? Reaching out to the, that can go out to all the students so that the parents and the students can see it. I think seeing the teacher's face will bring a little bit of normalcy to them, and I think that that's what they would really appreciate. So I've asked them to reach out and, and see if they can't do some, some videos and send them out, just so that there's a, they, they see the teacher again and, and, and feel a little bit of a connection. And also a little bit that they've returned to normalcy. And I, and I'm hoping that they'll take advantage of that. And I'm actually thinking now that my two older dog, my two daughters are home, that maybe they can show me how to do a video and then show me how to send it out, because I haven't got the faintest idea how to do one. So. But that was one of the recommendations and and, and as I said, I did mention to the, to the, to the parents in the, the letter that I sent to them, again, the importance of them reaching out, not, not guessing, not, not, if you're not sure, just reach out. So. Anything on that? I know, Brett, you want me to try to stop a little bit?
Yeah, just, yeah, just pause just real quick. Just, I, I would just say one, one of the, one of the bright spots in all this for me is just been watching Mr. Mainz get more technologically advanced through all this. So, you know.
I'm not afraid of technology. I just don't have the time for it.
Yeah, I hear you.
So I wanted to talk about remote learning. I did put in the letter that went out to parents and also that went out to the teachers just to sort of focus. And this is coming from the DESE as well. And, and when we say remote learning, I think what everybody immediately thinks of is it's online learning and everything is based on online learning. And remote learning is not that. Online learning is online learning. Remote learning is, is taking advantage of a number of different vehicles to, to bring lessons to the students. In, in my emailing out to the, to the staff, I talked about things such as individual projects, even something that just piques the kid, the, the student's curiosity and, and, and challenging to come up with a, a project that they're going to share or, you know, learning packets that have gone out or writing prompts or, or critical reading or close reading prompts. So just simply asking kids to read. So it should be a myriad of things. And I'm, I'm concerned about focusing so much attention on screen time, right? Because I, I just don't think that that's necessarily the best thing that we, that we can do for the students. And I know that this puts the parents in a difficult spot where they now have all, all of a sudden become facilitators of, of learning as well and, and so forth. But if we mix it up and we vary it, it'll, it'll eliminate boredom, it'll, it'll keep the kids engaged and allow us to continue to make some progress with, with our learning. One thing that has become an issue that we've talked about and is, especially at the middle school and the high school level. And so Josh and Brian, jump in if you want to at this point. They're doing a lot of Google Chat. They're doing some Zoom activities. You know, the advanced placement students, they, they've got to continue on with the work that they're doing and, and, and they're going to need to do some face-to-face in, in, in using Zoom or, or Google Chat or Google Meet, whatever the, the other things are. And, and Donna, I sent a, a text or an email, I can't remember. But somebody mentioned, my daughter mentioned to me that she has Mac and, and they're doing a lot of distance learning now that New York City is shut down. Something about Zoom on a Mac might be compromised that they, that hackers can get hold of the cameras and so forth. I don't know if that's an issue for us, but I just wanted to share that with you. But so I did ask that the middle school and high school, and I know Brian and I, I don't see Josh anymore. He must have disappeared or.
I'm still here.
Oh, there you are. Okay. All right. I don't know if there's anything you guys want to chime in with regards to how you've presented the information for your high school teachers and middle school teachers about the use of Zoom and so forth?
Yes. So, you know, we, I, I've put out the, the protections that we did, that Donna set up the new accounts and the, the guidance of having kids keep their cameras off. I don't know how well that's being followed. The kids want that FaceTime, but, you know, I'm encouraging it. To kind of get out of that situation of, of this Zoom hijacking, I've told the teachers that they need to not have their rooms be open in public. It has to be by invite only, and I think that that's helped out. But the, the problem we've had with Zoom is that in that nine to 12 window, so many teachers are, are zooming now because the kids want that, that we're having trouble scheduling it. So I'm proposing a new schedule for us moving forward that would kind of eliminate those, those conflicts. But, you know, they're, they're making a lot of use of it. I think the kids like it just to have some kind of social contact if nothing else.
And I'd like to jump on that in terms of how much people have risen to the occasion. I think it's really an opportunity here that we have to, to highlight that the teachers, I'll speak for the, the middle school teachers. They've done a phenomenal job. I'm absolutely astounded with how quickly they adapted, how quickly they adjusted and how flexible they've been and engaging that they've been with their students. It's all been all hands on deck. Our paraprofessionals, our support staff, every teacher is in communication with kids every day. We're keeping logs of, of who's attending, what sessions of Zooms, who's turned work in through Google Classroom. If a student is not available or we haven't seen them for a while, I've personally spoken to, to over a dozen students. I call them, you know, check in on them. Mr. Carl's been checking in on, on students. Mr. Aronian's been checking on students, we're talking to parents. So there's been a tremendous amount of communication. And we're very impressed with the level of engagement. The kids know none of this is, what we're doing is mandatory or graded. And it takes a lot of the teeth out of, of what we do. So, you know, we're on a new mission here. We are, we are motivating students to learn because it's the right thing to do and to help them understand that they have a unique opportunity to, to take control of their, their education and advantage of the, the great work the teachers are doing. So I just want to give a shout out to the teachers and support staff. I've been incredibly impressed with them and, and, you know, I think they've been doing such a great job. We had to slow down a little bit last, last, last Friday, you know. There's a, a lot to be done, but we got to find that pace, you know, and it's been hard on families. Having parents home, having kids home, other kids are having to take classes, parents are trying to help their kids. Our teachers are trying to help their children learn at the same time. You know, those, those golden three hours of nine to 12, you know, we're trying to get a lot done in that time. But again, I think people have risen to the challenge. It's been great. So.
Brian, how about John? Anything for your, for your building or Cindy? Anything that we should be concerned? I know that they're not using Zoom at the elementary or the primary, but I think they're doing videos and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, so at the primary, sorry, John.
You're good.
The primary, they're all doing Google Classroom. They are doing videos. They are reading stories to the children. The children are responding back to them in Google Classroom. We've had a few challenges with certain students that are not online and have not accessed Google Classroom yet. So we've had Mrs. Purvis making phone calls. The teachers are sending more emails, trying to find out what is the issue. Is it technology? Is it? And a lot of times it's the parent is working at home. The kids are five and six. They can't just get on like a middle schooler or a high schooler and do the lesson themselves or watch the video. So that's been the pa, the parent issue. So it's a challenge to get the kids on there while the parent's working.
Yeah, and it's similar at the elementary school. Our, everybody's either using Google Classroom or Seesaw, which allows students to post and interact with each other. Our teachers are getting ready to, if they haven't already, posting videos of read alouds and those types of things, just saying hi to the kids. So far, we have touched base with every student in the school. Everybody's accessing a little bit differently. We have some students that are, are, their parents, it was, we were sending out too much information. And so we've kind of reined that back in form and other students are asking for more. And so we're making sure we give more. Mr. Aronian and Ms. Blessing have been amazing. They've probably contacted 50 to 60 families already. Just trying to say, hey, you know, we noticed you aren't accessing the, the items. Is there anything you need to help with? Miss Souza and Mr. Vilmir helped check out about 30 iPads to students that needed devices on Monday, which was great. So we're, we're, we're kind of figuring it out as we go. And it's getting more and more complex as we go, which is exciting. The teachers have really jumped in and done a great job with it. But I think we're providing some good stuff for the kids.
Great, thank you. Neely, I'm not sure if you had anything that, that you would want to add in, anything with the videos and so forth?
Yeah, you know, I just, I think that, you know, first of all, the level of collaboration that's been coming from the, you know, the general education teams and the special education teams has, has been unbelievable. You know, from the inception, there's sort of been a concept of taking the team approach is the way that we want to do this because we are an inclusive district. So regardless of whether or not we're in front of each other or, or, you know, online or, or sharing resources or whatever we're doing, we want to be doing it together. So, you know, to echo what Brian said, they really did acclimate to this very, very quickly. You know, it, it hasn't just been, excuse me, the special education liaisons. It's also been the paraprofessionals and the EBA's. Liaisons have been very organized in their approach of divvying out work and, and, and making sure that everybody has a role in this and making sure that the level of communication and what's going out to kids is, has a very balanced approach. Last Friday and the beginning of this week, what we did was we sort of customized our approach to how we are providing the services, which I talked a little bit about in the letter that I sent out this week. But the other reason, you know, like, like Brian had said, I think we got a little ahead of ourselves in a good way. You know, we, we were working so hard and, and so fast and a lot was going to parents. So all of the special ed liaisons and the L teachers reached out to each family. And we talked about, okay, how can we tailor this to work for your family? Because we know that, you know, the first part of this is obviously safety. The second part is how you can manage your own family, you know, and in, in, how, how are we going to, how are we going to strike the balance, you know? And I think we've had some, some great success with it, you know. I tried, I've tried this week to slowly roll out the concept of the fact that we are responsible to provide faith. Because what comes with that is, you know, the responsibility to make sure that kids are being provided with, you know, access to their goals.
All right, Neely, or anyone that maybe does watch this, faith, can you define it for us?
I absolutely can. I'm sorry. I feel like it's just us.
At some point.
The faith is the concept of a free, appropriate public education. So basically meaning that all students, regardless of ability or disability, have the ability to access the same things and the same type of education. So, um, you know, what we've been doing is they, they had a training this morning and we're just slowly adding parts, you know. And, and we're just getting back really basically to, to what we were doing when we're at school. We're starting meetings up again. You know, and they're, they're learning, you know, how to, instead of having a student folder, how to have, you know, a zip folder and, and all these things. And everybody's been very flexible, even within a, a very difficult time. So I'm super proud of, of everybody.
Yeah. So I, I would say that a lot of the superintendents are saying, echoing the same thing, that everybody started out like gangbusters and now they're sort of sort of getting their sea legs and, and backing off and trying to find a, a better balance with everything that, that they're doing. I mentioned this at the, at, at a recent admin video conference. But this is a great opportunity and, and the commissioner has, has posted this and, and I did post the, and Donna posted the commissioner's letter on the website and did send it out to parents. But this is an opportunity, and, and I agree with him, to take advantage of the time to delve deeper into, into a content area and explore in, in, in greater detail, if you will, or specificity. And, and, and just to get them to do some things that are different. I, I mentioned at the admin meeting, it goes back to the days before MCAS examinations when, when, when teachers were actually able to have autonomy over their classrooms and, and the ability to, to try to engage their kids in, in, in a myriad of different ways. And they weren't held their feet to the fire to, to make sure that they're getting their standards done by this date and that date. So this is a great opportunity for people to try some new things that, that will engage the kids, that they'll have fun with and, and, and not be worried about the pressures of the standards and, and curriculum limitations and so forth. So I, I hope that the teachers will do that as well and hope kids will take advantage of it. In the letter I put out to parents, we are asking the, the, the students to try to be as active as possible. I put down a time, timeframe of three to four hours during the course of the day. Doesn't necessarily mean that they had to be engaged with the teachers over three or four hours, but they're involved with academic work over a period of three to four hours. And and I should mention, and, and I know that Cindy and John had mentioned this, that, that Donna has been very helpful and Scott have been very helpful in getting devices to kids who may not have had them. I know Brian went out of his way to make the iPads available so everybody could get them. So that is part of it and that they should be checking in online. They should be checking their emails and they should be sending emails. But it shouldn't be the predominance of everything that they do. We also know that it's, we've, we've, we've put parents in a, well, we've got a couple at home right now that are, that are dealing with it. So how are the parents dealing with this, this new normal of being, being at home and, and educating? I know that John's got it at home and Lisa's got it and, and Brett's got it. I've seen his, his, his children going, passing by in the night over there. So how's that? How are you guys holding up?
So far, so good. One good thing that I do like is the rumblings in town. There are none. So we're doing something correct here because you, you would hear it there first. But as for in my house, I'm totally pleased. My Katie is totally engaged. I think she might like this a little better. It's cool, but she likes the interaction, the back and forth. She gets up and checks everything every day and right into her work. So she's loving it so far.
Excellent.
Yeah, let's, let's just go around the, the whole kind of school committee here. So I don't know if Kelly or Julie, you want to go next and just kind of give your thoughts?
I'm muted.
Hold on, Julie. Do you want to mute?
She's muted. I'll go.
No, I got it. Both my husband and I are, are essential workers, so it's kind of been an interesting way of, of doing school. But I think we got it. I appreciated phone calls from, from administration to remind my littlest that he had to my daughter takes it very serious. My son actually kind of is taking it serious too. So, yeah, it's good. Hanging in there.
Good. Kelly?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say I haven't gotten any communication or a lot of communication, but I don't really expect it with a high school kid. And I'm sure there's plenty he's not telling me. He, you know, he's got the schedule down. There, there were some issues, I guess, at one point, something came out saying that certain classes would be maybe Monday, Wednesday, and others would be Tuesday, Thursday. I don't know that that's really happening the way that it was set out originally. But got no complaints. He's got, you know, he's got his work to do and, and logs on when he needs to do it. And it all seems to be going fairly smoothly.
So maybe we can throw it over to, to Mr. Arno. How are you making out up there?
Not bad. I got, I've got two very different children, so two very different situations. You know, my, my middle schooler, I, has been doing very good. I don't have to manage her time too much. Although we, I just started getting communications with daily updates as a guardian in, in Google Class or whatever, which is helpful because she, she actually has missed some assignments. So now we're, we're getting her to catch up on those. So, you know, that's, that, that's, that's useful. That's something I, I, you know, that was, that was a hole that was there before. I wasn't getting that communication. She was just telling me, yeah, everything's getting done, everything's getting done. And she's always been a good student, so I just trust it. And now it's like, okay, well, maybe we got to, you know, watch things a little more. In my elementary school, he's just, he's a highly social, high-energy guy. So it's just, you know, managing him every day is, is, is tough. And, but we're, we're getting through it. I do like the Seesaw app that they started rolling up for that. I think he really enjoys that. He enjoys some of the online tools, the Prodigy math. He loves that. He can spend all day on that, really. And I did a new assignment, going back to his kind of different ways of learning. They'd already been working on kind of a book report, cereal box project. And now they're going to be doing a commercial for that cereal box, which is, I think, I think a new, brand new assignment that they wouldn't have done normally, which I think is a great opportunity to kind of just, again, learn a little bit differently. So.
That goes back to the whole idea of going a little bit deeper and, and being a little bit more creative with your assignments. That's great. I, I am, I am curious how Mr. Bell with four little ones at home is, is managing.
We're, we're doing great. My wife's a teacher also, so she's working from home. So it, it, we're still trying to find that balance of work and home and all that. But I think that's what a lot of people are struggling with. I, I, I much prefer to send my kids to school for them to learn than for me to have to work with them for a couple hours a day. Because then you get the, dad's not my teacher. So I, I get, I get attitude from the kids sometimes, but, but we're, we're surviving.
I just want to note that Becky Chardian has joined us now. Welcome, Becky.
Hi, Becky. One of the things that went out in, in the mailing as well was also that we, we've asked the administrators to work with their teachers. One of the things that's really important is, is, is recording and keeping a record of all that's happening. So that we, that when, when we get back into session, we know who's been involved. Keeping a record of what they're sending out for emails and keeping a record of when they're reaching out on a phone call, just to document everything, because a lot of it's going to get lost if we don't. So each school has got their own recording platform that they're using and, and parents are aware that we are recording, not, not video recording, but we are logging in the information. You know, that in, in math today, it was questions, you know, one through 50 even page, whatever it was. And, and then, then there's a record of all the students who participated. So keeping the records, I think, is, it's no different than regular classroom. But I wanted to make sure that while we're in this remote learning experience that we're doing it. And one of the things that came up was, that was a little bit of a question was, one of the things that when originally we thought that we were only going to be out for a couple of weeks was that the commissioner had suggested that we just review and delve a little bit deeper. But now that we're going to be out a total of eight weeks and possibly longer, who knows at this point? Everybody felt that they needed to move on a little bit, but in, in, in so doing, the, the issue became the, still the issue of grading and how we're going to grade and so forth. And we're trying to stay away from that. And one of the questions that was raised, I got an email on it, was what's, what's credit and what's not credit? And, and the reason for using the phrase credit and not credit was because when you simply do pass fail, the, the failed piece of it has a sort of a very negative connotation. And, and so we tried to get away from it. So we're just saying credit, non-credit. And so what credit means is that the student was engaged, did a very, a nice job. Teachers may, you know, redirect them to finish up things and, and, and present a better product at the end. But no credit is that students are just not actively involved in, in what's going on. And I know that Josh has a record of, and he's been reaching out especially to the high school kids. Because if, if we're back in school, there, you know, you've got seniors who are looking to graduate. And this has done an eight-week hiatus from, from their education as, as, as best we can do it. So I just wanted to clarify that the idea of credit was, in, in, in not credit is, is, is to stay away from pass fail. Oh, you got a failing grade, you're a failure, that type of thing. We didn't want, we didn't want that to be the case. So. And, and the expectation is that we'll continue that all the way to May 6th or May 4th, I think. It is May 4th that we, that we were talking about. If there's any questions on, on that part of it that I did send out?
Anyone? Just want to pause real quick there just to make sure. No questions? Um, Becky, we, we did kind of just go through a quick kind of round table, just as, as parents, all of us, just your experience so far for, for your children. Do you want to kind of chime in on, on that?
Sure. First of all, I'm really sorry. I literally, I just got my lines crossed and for some reason I hit 7:30 today.
Okay.
Never been 7:30 before, so I.
We're, we're all a little bit off right now.
So maybe that's indicative a little bit of what it's been like. Neely, God bless her, has been copied on, I don't know, 40 emails between myself and my daughter's team. And that's just one parent and Zoe's pretty, pretty, I don't know, high functioning. She's not a huge challenge in most ways. And that's just one parent. And Zoe's pretty, I don't know, high-functioning. She's not a huge challenge in most ways. No, it's going okay. It's a little tough. I've got a nine-year-old and a four-year-old, so the four-year-old wants to play with her big sister. And she can't because my kid's not the kind of kid who can catch up quickly if they're going to have to truncate curriculum. But the teachers have been fantastic with responsiveness and materials. So I think if anything, we've gotten overflow of information, which is the materials and opportunities for learning, which is better than too little. I think now it's just kind of up to us parents to kind of weed through what we can do and strike a balance. So that's what we're doing. And again, I'm very sorry.
Okay, so the other thing, I kind of mentioned it real quickly, but, and I don't know if Donna is still with us. She may have dropped out to the bottom of the screen now, but there was some concerns with regards to technology. I think we've addressed a lot of that. And I did see a couple of emails going back and forth with people being able to secure connectivity through chatter or Comcast or something along those lines. I haven't heard, I don't know if any of the administrators would say that there's been anybody who's had any issues with connectivity?
I had one student that did not have internet access at home, but Miss Blessing spent about an hour, I think it was Comcast that she was working with, got the family set up with internet. So if there are other families out there, we have some resources to help with that. We just didn't know who they are. But for the most part, I think the elementary school set with technology right now with internet access.
We've been trying to get the information about the spectrum free for sixty days to families that don't have internet, but I don't know how widely disseminated that's gotten because I can't send emails to them if they don't have internet.
Yes, it's been all over Facebook, but you're right. If you don't have internet, you know, you can't guarantee that you have, you know, an iPhone with the Facebook app on it either.
So do we need to make phone calls, Donna?
I don't know. Maybe if you want to do a one-call with that information, with that phone number for Spectrum, in case there are people still out there that haven't heard, that might not be a bad idea.
Okay. And I'm glad you brought up the one-call. We've been trying to stay away from making one-calls and trying to use the one-call email in texting platforms rather than constantly interrupting and so forth. So we're going to continue to try to stay away from that as much as we possibly can. I mean, we've been putting out a lot of materials, myself and all the administrators, so we're going to try to stay away from that.
I think that's been useful, Kevin. I think the only kind of hiccup in that so far, and maybe you guys have already talked through this, but I think one day I got three different emails from, I think, three different, you know, like within, it felt like within an hour, maybe they just kind of came through that way. So maybe just try to coordinate to, you know, space those out a little bit more or try to combine them or whatnot. That's the only thing that I've seen really issue with the communication there.
And that's kind of why, Brett, I've tried to just only do it on the weekend and get it out on the weekend rather than interfere with, I know that these guys are communicating with their parents and so forth. So I try to minimize it and try to keep mine off to the weekend. But of course, mine was very lengthy, but I want to address all of the issues that had come up since the governor had closed everything down. But your point is well-taken. I did want to share that we are continuing with the grab-and-go meals from eleven to one o'clock on Mondays and Wednesdays at the elementary school. Seem to be getting a consistent group that's coming through. If there are families out there that have not taken advantage and would like to take advantage, they should email their building principal so that we can be made aware. And we'll make arrangements with Lisa Leon, who's our food service director, to make sure that we are preparing meals for them and get the information out to them. So if there are parents who would like to take advantage of this and have not, simply email their building principal and we'll get that information shared with Lisa Leon and make sure that they're communicated with and we can do the meals for them. A loose, couple of loose ends here. One of the questions that keeps getting surfaced is MCAS. So a quick update, and I did include this in the letter, is that the state has applied and received a federal waiver on mandated competency exams. They have applied for the waiver with the state. We have not heard back from the state at this point in time as to whether they will waive this year's MCAS testing or not as of right now. My sense is that the further and the deeper this goes, that that seems to be an inevitability that they will waive the MCAS testing for this year as we're looking at the beginning of May. And by this time, quite a bit of the testing would already be done.
Who's in charge of that decision at the state level? Is that a Baker decision?
No, actually, it's the legislature.
Legislature, okay. Thank you.
It would take, it would take, it would take an amendment to the mandate. So my sense is they'll probably approve that.
I have a question on that, just for understanding. If they are waived for this year, does that mean that the kids take this year's test next year or that test does not exist?
I would love to answer that for you, but I would be speculating, Kelly. But I think what would happen is that if they were a 10th grader, they would be exempted. It would be recorded. As a matter of fact, you've got some seniors who may not have completed all their MCAS with passing grades. They would be waived as well. They can do about it.
Thank you.
I think the more interesting challenge is you try to track the progress over the years with these tests. That's one of the ways it's used, right? So now if you're, you know, you're an eighth grader and now you're missing that year, there's kind of a gap in that, in that tracking, I guess, overall.
Well, you know, to that point, Brett, Jeff Riley, the commissioner, is actually a proponent of backing off on the number of years in which we are testing. So I think you're going to see some changes in that over the next few years as to how often kids are going to be testing.
Yeah, good point.
And he's a strong proponent of that. My understanding, and Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, on this, is that the AP exams are still on and that they're going to be online and taken at home.
Yes, and I have a call-in for this tomorrow. I think that they're going to significantly abbreviate the amount of coverage that it's going to cover. So they're going off the assumption that the kids basically weren't getting AP instruction after mid-March.
Right. Or not, at least not the same level of instruction that they would have gotten face-to-face all the time.
That's what the college board's assuming, yeah.
Okay. And then we had a conversation this morning, just for the committee's information, is that we know we're coming up against some time schedules and time issues. Most importantly would be, of course, senior week and prom and graduation. But also, we've, just so, I know the last time that we were all together, I think we were talking about the Disney trip. And it wasn't being received as favorably as we might have liked, but Disney is still closed. So we're happy to report that that was resolved equitably and fairly. And I think everybody was happy with, they're not happy with not being able to go on the trip. But at least it's been resolved with the airlines and the travel agent and the Disney. I think that's correct, Josh, on that?
Yep. Yeah, the travel agent actually really came through with a little bit of, you know, coercion by threatening to contact WHDH and some of the other TV stations to say, look at this terrible thing JetBlue and Disney are doing to these poor kids. And as soon as they sent that and CC'd their Disney contacts, they're getting all but a small deposit. And then I told Nicole, we're going to work on that too, just the whole thing back.
So, you know, that's worked out. We did talk a little bit about prom and graduation, Josh. You want to talk about the date that you moved it to?
Yeah, so the facility that we're using is, hold on, what's it called?
Neely, it's right up the street from your house, Neely.
Say it one more time. Imperial.
No, Grandview.
That's it, Grandview. It's all about Imperial, but yeah, Grandview.
So the Grandview is closed until May 15th. Well, our prom was May 8th, so that posed a problem. The date that we were able to get was June 7th, which, you know, it is after graduation, but I've talked to the other DVC principals. They've all pushed their proms to June as well. It's really what we have to do if we're going to have one. So yeah, it's after graduation, but, you know, we'll basically have the kids, I think it's a good idea to have them just sign off on the agreement that we have outside guests sign off on that they're going to follow.
So you would categorize them as an outside guest, just like we, anybody who we've invited by a student to attend the prom and use that as the, something to hold over their head. But we've got great kids. I'm not really, I'm sure it's not going to be an issue, but just as a safety check. And we talked a little bit about graduation because if you listen to some of the medical people out there, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that they think that by June 2nd, is it, Josh? June 2nd, that we're going to be.
June 7th.
Session and everything's going to be back to normal. And that then creates a little bit of a question as to, okay, we know we don't want to compromise having a graduation. And we figured we would ask the committee what their thoughts were to possibly having to move that. It may end up having to be, has to get moved to July or even to the beginning of August. I don't know if the committee has any concerns?
So many concerns, but yeah, it is what it is, you know? It's just, yeah, just another layer of kind of problems that everyone's facing with this. I just want to confirm that. So the current graduation date is not June 7th. That was the new prom date, right?
Yep. New prom date. And the graduation date, I believe, is June 2nd.
No, I think it's May 29th.
And June 7th is a Sunday? That's correct?
It is, which, you know, the point there is that it's back to school. Monday's a school day. So, you know, it is sort of a, but it's kind of tight getting dates.
Can you get that for me? Can you hear the phone ringing? No? We don't usually use the phone in my house.
The number one thing that kids have really communicated to me, the seniors, is kind of that anxiety about losing the other senior. They've lost Disney and they keep asking, you know, what about prom? What about graduations? So, you know, I think it is important that we get them as many of those things as we possibly can.
I guess, Josh, I would ask the question of the committee, are they open? Are you guys open to the idea of having some flexibility in trying to retain as many of the things as we possibly can?
I am.
Let's just go around the table.
Yeah, I mean, I think anything that we can keep for them, you know, we'll have to be flexible. I don't think we can decide today when things will be, but we can certainly say, yes, we're willing to make those choices.
Julie, any concerns?
Same. Agree with her.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say I think we just got to be flexible, be creative and, you know, do the best we can for these kids. You know, I think them in particular, this is, you know, it's the end of, you know, an era in their life. And it'd be good to see it go out in somewhat of a positive now.
So I kind of echo what Kelly said, is that a lot of these things are just going to, we're not going to know, we're not going to have a resolution until we finally, as it gets closer, we'll have to make additional plans. And people are going to have to be patient, which I think is difficult. They want to know now. And I know that graduation, there's, you know, the people that might need to fly and so forth to come into it. But I don't know too many people that are flying right about now and so forth. But, and so then the other thing is the MIAA, the Athletic Association for the State, is attempting to try to save the spring season. They have put together what would be an abbreviated season and also a playoff system. It also is pretty ambitious because they think it's going to start right after, if we're back in school on May 6th, they're hoping to start right then and there and be playing through the end of June. So that will all obviously be contingent upon whether or not we're back in school and back in school on the anticipated start date. So they are trying to save the spring season at this time. We do have some other things that will have to be adjusted as we go along. The spring concerts, parades. Brian, you have a talent show. I believe there's a Mr. DHS at the high school. There's Tiger Jam. All of those things are going to have to be worked out as time moves along. And I have to say that people are going to need to be pragmatic about it and that some of these things may not be able to happen this year because there's just not going to be enough time to prep it. I'm thinking of the concerts especially. If the music groups are not getting together, how can they possibly be expected to perform in a concert and so forth? So, or going to parades and so forth. I know that that's, there's practice, there's rehearsals. So some of these things may unfortunately not be able to happen this year. Let's see here. So that's a lot. I guess I would say I would finish by simply saying that it is, again, I remind everybody that they need to keep their attention on the importance of communicating, communicating and communicating and trying to get through this. And I would say, again, thank you to our teachers and support staff, thank you to our parents, and thank you to our students who are in extraordinary times but still engaged. And I think it speaks volumes about the kids we have in Douglas and the staff that we have in Douglas. So that was the wrap-up of everything that I thought was important that we address, given the status of where we're at right now.
Let's just pause there for a second before we get to the next part of Mr. Mainz's report. Any questions on any of the kind of COVID-19 response items? Becky?
All right. Maybe you already answered this. So I was wondering if there's any decision that's been made as to whether, if school goes back in session full swing at some point before the summer. I've heard a couple of parents who have children with asthma, different health issues that are saying to me, even if school were to resume for three weeks, they don't want to send their children back. Did Governor Baker or DESC say anything? I know that when the closures first started, or at some, I'm sorry, at some point, you know, nobody was going to be penalized for not showing up at school.
Right, right.
Has that been decided about if we were to reopen for the remainder of the year?
So I have not seen anything about that. And I will put that out as a question to the Superintendent's Association and to the commissioner to see if there is any information on that. You know, one of the things that we've done, we've spent a lot of time is getting the buildings cleaned and so forth. There hasn't been much in the way of activity in there. I think that, you know, we could assure them that we would, again, make sure that the buildings have been deep cleaned and sanitized before they come in. But I know that that might not address all of their concerns. So my sense, my reaction to that would be that we would be, certainly in extraordinary times, we would have to be understanding and make accommodations for that, those types of concerns. So, but I can't speak for the state. I don't know if they're going to have any objection to it.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a really good question though. Anyone else on any? Okay, so we want to move on to FY21 budget considerations, Mr. Mainz.
So I'm not really sure where we're at with all of that and whether that might be best to hold off on that.
Yeah, I think maybe just update with what we do know or what we maybe suspect. So the Board of Selectmen met last night. I sat in on the meeting remotely. They did not make a decision on moving annual town meeting yet and the budget process. I think they all are in agreement that it is going to need to move off of the normal date, which I think the original annual town meeting would have been Monday, May 4th. So they've given us a agreement, it's not going to be there. They just don't know when it's going to be. So that's why originally we had our budget open hearing scheduled for the night, public hearing scheduled for this evening. I feel confident that we could put that off for now because I feel pretty confident that, you know, town meeting's not going to happen May 4th and we don't need a budget by then. The talk at the meeting last night was, and this is, it's extreme, but moving annual town meeting out to September. So quite a ways out from where we are. And the town administrator's reasoning for that was, you know, if this is all kind of, I don't know, settling down in the late June, early June timeframe, we're pretty close to closing the year out and to try to expect the town finance on folks to be able to close out the year and manage putting together a new budget. He felt like that was just too close together, so he preferred to move out the annual town meeting for even further into the August, September timeframe, where that would leave the school district and the town as a whole. From a budget perspective for FY21, is operating on a 1/12 budget, which is, I don't know. Courtney, if you want to jump in and kind of explain 1/12 budget a little bit from your perspective and how that works? Think you're still muted?
I didn't get a chance to email Gene today because, like with a lot of things, you know, the way that I, you know, I'm assuming they're going to do the calculation the same way that I would expect it to be done, but I'm just not sure. I didn't get a chance to email. I, you know, I'm assuming they're gonna do the calculation the same way that I would expect it to be done, but I'm just not sure. I didn't get a chance to email or.
I don't wanna put you on the spot then. Um, I'll, I'll just, I'll believe my understanding from, of it. It's, you basically, you would operate on a, on a. Budget that's, um, at least equal to 1/12 of your previous year's budget. Um, now for us, the, the, that, they think of some unique challenges, cuz. Part of our, our expenses each year are paid through revolving funds. So we have to, you know. Would you be operating under the assumption that you're using 1/12 of your revolving funds from the, not your revolving fund total balance, but whatever you would. Using the previous year. So I think there's just some, some things that we're gonna have to figure out. They're gonna be. More unique challenge for us than it would be for the town as far as use of revolving funds and whatnot. No?
That, it should be, that should be, that should just, um, be the general fund, Brett.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But our funds are our funds and, you know, once we have the balance right forward and all of that, those are our funds to use. And under state law, um, they don't have to be appropriated. Revolving funds, yeah.
Okay.
It's just a general fund.
No, I understand, but, but, but for instance, we, I think we use, you know, we use, tend to use, um, school choice for a lot of our, you know, electricity and whatnot. So would we continue to use? That same school choice dollars come July if we don't have a budget? Depending on school choice dollars to fund electricity as, you know, or is, you know, so I think just lots to figure out there. So.
And I think there's a lot that, that of, of a concern. One of the things that I wanted to bring to the, the committee's attention is that. Um, without knowing really where we're at and, and whether or not. How, if, if the number that we have right now is going to be acceptable, which we know it's not going to be. How deep is the cut gonna have to be? And by contract, anyone who is gonna be, um. Be. Noted as a reduction in force needs to be made aware of it by June 1. And so.
Kevin, can you speak to that, that requirement? Is that part of, um, our contracts? Is that part of state law? Is that what?
It's part of our collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
Where that they need to be notified. And, um, you know, uh, some of us who've been, been around for, for a while know that that was a common practice. Uh, back in the day when, in, when, if you were, you know, five years in, you were constantly getting a, uh, reduction in force. Um, letter saying that because they just didn't know how deep, you know, budgets were going to, were going to be impacted and so forth. Because technically we, we would need to let people know that there's a possibility that their position may not be funded, but we will conceivably know that. Well, after school lets out and so forth, and that's, that's, that's really concerning.
It is, yeah. So I, I think unfortunately, we're probably gonna be back in that scenario where. Yeah, I just don't know. Yeah, we're, we're, we're not unsure of what we're gonna be able to fund. So I don't know if you have to, if you have to let someone know, if you have to, you have to over. Reduce and then hire back, which is an unfortunate situation, but, um, I'm not sure what else.
We would, you're, you're right, we would go, we would have to go greater than we anticipate.
Yeah.
It, the only, the, the drawback to that, besides the, the angst that it's gonna cause for.
Oh, yeah.
Teachers is that, um, you know, they could go out and find. Suitable employment somewhere else.
Right.
And, and, and you, you run the risk of losing that, that teacher because, I mean, I gotta think on the district's gonna be in the same bind, bind, you know, trying to figure out. And sort out the, um, the fallout that's gonna happen because of this, this health emergency, but. Um, you know, you do run the risk of that, of, of, of possibly losing teachers and, um. And because they, they've just gotta, they gotta go try to find another job and so forth.
Right.
That's, that's the hard part about it, but, but to not do so, you know, could be, could be extremely problematic as well.
Yeah, I, I just think it's important that we all start preparing for that. It's, it's, it's terrible. It's not where any of us wanna be. Hopefully, maybe things turn and then we don't have to be in that spot, but I think we just gotta be prepared for, that's, that's where we're gonna end up being. So, you know, go ahead.
No, we have to, especially where 84% of our budget is salaries.
Yeah.
So that's a big, unfortunately, a big part of it, you know?
Um, so, you know, the, the, the last guidance we had was, um, the town was planning on a, on a 2% appropriate, 2% increase in our appropriation from, from last year, from FY20.
Right.
Um, I think that is the absolute best case scenario we can expect, um, given these times. Um, you know, I think we need to, we need to have a budget subcommittee meeting. Sooner or later. Um, I'm not sure how much of a rush it is, if, if this is getting put off that far. Um, but, you know, I, I think we gotta start preparing a budget that is at, at the very most, a 2% increase, um, over FY20. And also look at scenarios where it's 1% or even flat, um, appropriation, or, you know, a 0% appropriation increase from FY20. Um, and hopefully that's the worst case, um, but, you know.
So, I mean, obviously, as, as you go down incrementally, it's, it's, it's deeper, deeper, deeper cuts. Um, and if we were to get down to 0%, um, I, that would be. That would be pretty significant for us, uh, to, to, to get down to 0%.
As we have to meet, we have to think about net school spending. Now, we have the preliminary from DESE, what the net school spending requirement is for FY21. But I'm hearing, I'm hearing some rumors, unfortunately. That there may be some adjustments to that only because of the state's, um, very, you know, everything's unprecedented, uncharted and all that, so. I hope that's not the case because of how close we are to net school spending as it is, but. Um, but regardless of that, you know, currently what we have, I don't know that a zero will, will meet net school spending.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, it's, if, if that's the case, um, you know, I think we just gotta be prepared for the worst.
Right.
And, and, and have that ready to go and be able to.
Yeah, various scenarios.
Well, in, 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 the other issue is, and we talked about this this afternoon with the admin team, is that, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty there. When, when you look at, um, revenues and, and, um. Is, is, is the state going to, you know, at one point we thought that this was, we were gonna, are they gonna back off their commitment? Are they gonna back off their commitment to? Uh, fully fund circuit breaker? Are they gonna back off their commitment to, um, to increase, um, spending and so forth? And, and then you've also got the, there's gotta be. Impacts to the town's revenues as well with this, especially if this goes two, three months.
Oh, absolutely.
And so there's a lot, those are, those are unknown variables that could, could have significant impacts on us.
And then the increase, the possible increase in assessments on the town side, which also cuts into the revenues that are made available for us as well for appropriation.
Yeah.
You know, school choice, BBT, Norfolk Aggie.
Yep. No, and I think, um, but the other, the other thing that's on the, you know, probably on the positive side, but just a complete unknown right now is, you know, as part of the, the federal. Um, relief package, the 2.2 trillion that was approved last week. Yeah, I think so. It was a track of days, but. At some point, some of that money is, is, is earmarked and, and supposed to be going to, to states and then school districts from there. So, but I have no idea. You know, what we can expect to see from that.
We did talk about that today as well, that, you know, you, you hope that with the, um. The stimulus statutes that was created, that there might be some money to come back and maybe it won't be as dire as we're thinking it's going to be. Um, because there'll be some, there'll be some backfilling going on that, that might help us to stay. You know, stay as whole as we possibly can, but, but I think the timing is gonna be the biggest issue. And, and, and we're gonna have to, and I'll reach out to the, to the leadership of the DTA and let them know that this is, this is. Practicality, we're gonna have to, we're just gonna have to let, you know, issue these reduction of force letters. And it's, it's our, our goal and our objective, not to lose anybody, but to bring everybody back.
Well, yeah, and I guess, should the conversation there be that, can we? Talk about moving that, that, that date? Um, I think it's there in their interest as well to, not necessarily, I understand without provisions there in the contract, but I think it's worth noting, you know. And, and in these times, do you, do you wanna move it?
Yeah, well, I think the only, is, is far back as you could probably move it is where our, our last day is June 19th.
Yeah. Maybe you can get that, you know?
Know it by that time, it's very latest, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The discussion though, Brett.
Yep. Okay. Um, any other questions on FY21 budgets? You know, it's, it's not pretty. It's not where we'd hope to be, but. It's where we're at.
Good.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Mainz, for your report?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next on our agenda is our school committee and subcommittee report, um, accounts payable report.
Hey, on March 12th, 2020, I signed seven batches totaling $31,006.62. On March 19th, 2020, eight batches totaling $146,072.2. And on March 24th, 2020, six batches totaling $418,282.74.
Okay.
That's it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, comments on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Um, next is our consent agenda. So we have a couple sets of minutes here. I, I do think it's worth trying to get through these. I think we may have lost track of a set of minutes as well. In our last agenda, we had. February 25th and March 4th minutes, um, on the agenda, but we didn't actually have the minutes, um, in the packet. So we skipped over it and now the February 25th minutes are, are not here. So if, if Mr. Mainz, you can speak with Lauren on that and see if, um, February 25th is still around. That was our joint meeting with, with ThinkCom.
Oh, okay, yep.
Okay. Um, other than that, I'd be looking for, um, any, any questions or amendments on either March 4th or the March 18th. Meeting minutes that we have, um, presented this evening.
I do have an, um, an amendment for the March 4th.
Okay.
On page four, under my FY2020 general fund budget report. I think it's just a misunderstanding about what I was presenting, but. We can even get rid of that last sentence if you want. She updated FY20 budget with the additional approved school committee items.
Okay.
Wanna take that out?
So scratch that?
Yeah, I can just take it out cuz it's not really, you know, what we were talking about. Not really relevant, so anyway. Other than that, it was, was fine.
Anyone else? Okay, and now I'll be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 4th, 2020 school committee meeting.
As amended?
As amended, thank you.
Well moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Lisa.
Second.
Second from Kelly. And we're, we're gonna do a roll call vote on this, um, as we were remote, so I would say Brett Oggle, I.
Lisa Brown, I.
Becky Churniac, I.
Becky, why don't you go again?
Becky Churniac, I.
Sorry, Becky.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Kelly Grady, I.
Julie Mulder, I.
Great, thank you. Okay, so March 4th are approved. Um, and March 18th, we have as well. Um, any amendments to that one? Questions or comments on it? Okay, seeing none, I'll be looking for a motion.
There was something I saw on it. Um. It says that I stated the college board had canceled the AP exams. It was, they had canceled the May SATs, not the APs.
Okay, where, what page are we on with that?
Um, superintendent's report.
Okay.
I'm looking, I just saw it. Um. Second paragraph down. Talking about the MCAS and the SATs.
I see it now. Ms. Grady stated that college board has canceled the May AP exams.
Yeah, they canceled the May SATs.
Okay. All right, so I'll be looking, any other changes, issues? Okay, seeing none, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 3:18, 2020 school committee meeting, as amended.
Well moved.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
Second from Becky, the roll call vote. Brett Oggle, I.
Lisa Brown, I.
Becky Churniac, I.
Kelly Grady, I.
I'm old, I.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Okay, next up, we have payment of school department employees through 5-1, 2020. Um, so, in our last meeting, um, we'd approved paying all district employees through. Um, April 6th, which was the original closure date. Now that we will close, um, until May 4th, we're looking to extend that on. Um, I'm not sure there's any new discussion on that. I know it is, you know, quite a bit further along, but I think a lot of the points from the last meeting, um, hold. This money is already budgeted. Um, the teachers are continuing to teach, um, support staff are continuing to support. Administrators are continuing to administer. We also, I think, have a situation where part of those relief, um, the federal relief funds require us to keep all our employees employed and paid, um, during this time. Um, if we were to expect to get any relief from those back, that never leave package.
It's an important piece, Brett.
Sorry?
That's an important piece.
Yes.
Goodie Brett. Goodie Brett, yeah, Courtney.
Hi.
Hi. Um, just one change from the, in the agenda. It said, um, through May 1st, and that is what I originally did tell Lauren. Um, but then I did change it in the vote language to May 3rd, just to go through right to the day before we're coming back. So that's the only change. And then I just added, um, the words due to the coronavirus, COVID-19 health emergency. That's the other thing that I added, um, in language from the, the first vote that you took a few weeks back.
And Courtney, I think you, you always send that language to, to me and Kevin and.
Greg Pagnini, yep.
I gotta find that now. I opened up everything else before the meeting, so I'd be ready to reference any of them, and that one I don't have. So give me just one second.
If you want, I can read it cuz I've got it in front of me.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah. As remember, silly me, I thought I was doing you guys such a great favor the other day and I printed out seven copies in my. Library and I ran down and got it and I ran back up. I'm like, you idiot. You're not gonna be in with me with.
Just to break old habits.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is, move that the school committee approved payment of salary and wages for all regular employees of Douglas Public Schools. Due to the coro- coronavirus, COVID-19 health emergency. For hourly employees, they will be paid the regular, regularly scheduled hours. Regular employees is, is defined as those who have been appointed by the superintendent of schools. For a specific ongoing position with assigned regularly occurring hours. This does not include any day-to-day staff. This approval is for the period beginning Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, through Sunday, May 3rd, 2020. Further votes may or may not be necessary going forward as the situation may change. With guidance from the state or federal government as the situation evolves.
Great. So there's the motion, so I can look for someone to. Looking for a so moved. There we go. We have a so moved from Lisa.
Second.
I hear a second from Kelly. There we go. Okay, any discussion, questions, comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go through roll call vote. Brett Oggle, I.
Lisa Brown, I.
Becky Churniac, I.
Kelly Grady, I.
Julie Mulder, I.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you all.
You all, yep.
Now I've lost, um, my agenda. I was trying to find that. Let's try to get that back up. There we go. Um, so that is the, um, extent of our consent agenda. Next up, we have school business and operation managers report. Ms. Keegan?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, one thing I would like to report is, as you know, like Kevin, I've had a lot of. In, in, in Neely as well, um, a lot of DEFC, uh, teleconferences, uh, most of them on financial issues. One of the, one that we had on, on Monday was regarding transportation. And as I had indic- indicated to you earlier, the whole state was looking, um, for some guidance from DOR. And then DOR and DESE were getting together to discuss the, um, payment of, um, transportation contracts. So what happened on Monday was we had a teleconference with DESE, with, uh, business managers throughout the state. Um, after DESE had confirmed with DOR. And basically, we were, um, told that what we should do is that. They put together a statewide, um, transportation vendor listing. And say, we have Tel- Telstone, for example, and there are two other school districts that have Telstone. So there would be one lead person that would be working, um, as a lead, but with the other school business managers as well. To look for some contractual, um, language to amend the contract. In other words, they're not driving students currently. So, you know, typically you wouldn't pay the full amount. So what we're doing is looking at something that's very reasonable. So that they can still stay afloat, you know, pay their leases, um, maintain their buses and, and things of that nature. So that's what's going on throughout the state. Um, so, uh, it's the, I suggested that Blackstone Millville actually be the lead on it. I didn't wanna be the lead on it, actually, on this particular thing. Um, so they'll come together with it. And what I thought I would do is, once we've come up with what we've come up with, we would go over it with, um, obviously Kevin, you, as a school committee. I also would like to get Greg Pagnini's input as well, to have an attorney's input. Um, and then, you know, we can go from there, but basically this is happening statewide. We were asked to do this by DEFC. There is a huge concern, as I stated before, nationwide with this situation. Um, that, uh, school bus companies. Can very well go out of business. And then when we go back to school, whether it's May 4th or September, there may be. A huge problem with no bus companies and bus drivers. Um, cuz there's the problem with both. You know, bus contractor companies is, is very limited and also bus drivers is very difficult to find bus drivers. So that's what's.
You know, bus contractor companies is is very limited, and also bus drivers is very difficult to find bus drivers. So that's what's going on with that. Another um teleconference that I had, and also Neely had one as well, and I did forward some information to uh Jean Lovett, the finance director, town accountant. Is with regard to the payment of um contracted services, fed uh tuitions. Neely and I spoke a little bit yesterday pertaining to that. I did send the guidance directly to Jean. And when Neely and I spoke, I did say that I would send, which I did today. Another follow-up email to um Jay Sullivan at at DESE, just to. Get a little bit more information, because Neely and I kind of were hearing two different things. So we wanted to get confirmation on a couple of small items, and then we would forward um any balance of information to the town accountant. And Neely will process her her invoices with regard to those things as well um accordingly. Everything has become a complication now. Nothing is simple. We don't just, we can't just just pay for things anymore. It's just, everything's complicated.
Um, Neely, would you mind speaking to that a little bit, just the fact um for our out-of-district um. You know, placements.
Sure.
We're still receiving services um from those those um entities. Um, do we have residential programs? Are the are the other students still in the residential programs during this?
Yep, so um I could speak to all of it. You know, basically, we, our students that are out of district um are at a variety of different schools, some being. Um. More behaviorally based, some being residential, some being. Um, you know, just private day schools that focus more on social, emotional and and academic and like that. At this point, all of the day schools that our students participate in are closed, and they are closed through May fourth. Um, so Brett, when I when I forward you those letters from the out-of-district schools, what, so what I do just for the entire school committee. When an out-of-district placement sends a letter which updates me on on what's going on, I also send. That letter to Brett, to Courtney, to Kevin, and and to my secretary, Lois. Um, and the reason I'm doing that is because of the potential financial impact, whether it be positive or negative. At this point, the guidance that I'm receiving from the special education administrator point of view. Is that we will still be responsible to pay for the out-of-district placements. Okay, um, and that, at this point, the last set of guidance that I received is that. They will reimburse us as they would through circuit breaker. So that that entity will remain, but the whole concept behind it. From a special education point of view, and from Russell Johnson from the um Department of Education, who was the. Special education guru, we'll call him. He he's kind of the right-hand man to the commissioner. Um. In in the way of special education student support, the whole mindset is. When this is done, sort of like what Courtney was talking about with transportation, when this is done. We need to make sure that our students who have some of the most intensive needs have schools to go to. So I guess the idea behind it is, if we don't continue payment, those students will not have places to go to school. So, again, at this time, we continue. To pay, because that is what, that's the guidance from my end that we're receiving from DESE. The other thing is residential schools um have remained open. The one that has closed is Perkins School for the Blind. Um, and we do have students that participate in in that school. Um, but and and we have kiddos that are residential. And for some of them, their parents have opted to take them home. Um, which is a personal decision.
Yep.
Um, but others, for a multitude of reasons, um you know, must remain at the residential placement. So that's that's basically where we are, and and that speaks a little to the guidance, again, from my end. You know, I I think like Courtney said. What happens on a good day sometimes is. You know, um, I'll 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 just use the finance part and I'll use uh student support. The Department of Education, having the best of intentions, may give different guidance to different departments. In a situation like this, where everything is so fluid. Again, they're doing, you know, from from my end, they're doing the best that they can through student, you know, by student support. With Courtney's end, they're doing the best that they can by business and findings. But the question is, how do those link? You know, so. I think, you know, the communication and collaboration between Courtney and I, you know, has been great throughout this whole thing, and and. We just sort of have a run towards it approach, you know, and I I put emails out to Russell Johnson, and she puts emails out to Jay Sullivan, you know, and. We just, we just keep asking, you know, and I think that's the best thing that you can do is just keep asking the question.
That's good, I appreciate that. So just to to follow up on on the on the day schools. Um, are any of the day schools providing, are they contacting any of our students still, or or is that, or is all contact kind of shut down at this point?
Yep, so what they do is they still provide the, just like we're doing, they're still providing the um. Online resources, the materials, virtual opportunities. So they are satisfying the student's education in the same way we are.
Okay, thank you, it's wonderful. I think I had the understanding from all the letters, but I want everyone else to hear that, though, so.
You got it.
I had a little bit more to add to that as well, um. So just to piggyback on what Neely just said, so in the end, though, in order for our invoices to get paid, it has to pass muster, you know, with the town. As well, but one of the things I did um bring up to Jay, and Neely and I have spoken about this as well. Is that kind of like the ninety-five percent of net school spending requirement, there's also what's called the maintenance of effort requirement as well. And um, that is something that during the finance call with the associate commissioner of DEFC, Jay Sullivan, um. He did remind us of that. If we don't meet that, Neely could move, lose the grant that she has, which is almost three hundred thousand dollars, so. Um, and among other other things as well. So those are the two points I'm looking for clarification on, and um and Neely and I will go from there.
Brett, you're muted.
There we go, thank you. Um, any questions on any of that from the rest of the school committee or anyone else on? Okay, seeing none. Um, other topics not anticipated. Covered quite a bit tonight already.
Um, can I just give a quick update on circuit breaker?
Sure.
Um, so basically, you know, there there's. Sort of two elements, um you know, there's extraordinary relief, um which was. Uh, due, I believe, this week. Um, there's been so many, you know, changed due dates. Now, the new due date is April thirteenth, so um my secretary, Lois, and I have been participating in trainings over the last couple of days. We have two more trainings left, um and then, you know, we're just gonna hit home, do the extraordinary relief. Um. The extraordinary report, get it in by the thirteenth, um and go from there. So. As I have more information to update, I will update, um. Could it go out a little further? It could. I will let you know that an advisory came out last night. I did forward it to Courtney, so she can participate if she's available. Um, and Jay Sullivan from the Department of Ed, who is the finance man, um, he is doing. I think a webinar, basically speaking to how COVID nineteen could potentially impact. Um, circuit breaker. So I have no idea what that's gonna look like. I have no idea what he's going to say. Um, and I was actually kind of shocked to receive that, but um more information, the better.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm Neely. I didn't, I don't think I got that email, so if if could you just check um to make sure, I could, I would.
Yeah, I forwarded it to you probably around twelve o'clock last night.
Okay, twelve. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I got it, but I'll double check. But again, we get a million emails, I probably. All right, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, just um a couple notes on on future meetings. Our agenda says that our upcoming upcoming meetings are May sixth and May twentieth. We do actually have a meeting scheduled for April eighth. Um, and I do have um confirmation from Representative McKenna and Senator Fatman that they'd be able to attend that meeting. I think it'll be a good opportunity. Originally, we wanted them to come to our 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 budget public hearing. Um, knowing that that's gonna be put off for a while, I thought it might still be good to to have a discussion with them. Um, get some updates from their perspective. Again, I think it's still gonna be a pretty fluid situation at that point. They might not have a whole lot of solid answers for us, but. It'd be good for them to hear from us, them to hear from us, some of the our struggles, our challenges, the, you know, the good things that we're doing, you know. Some of what we've done in the past there um with them, um and us to hear from them, kind of what what, you know, what they're seeing at at a state level. Um, and to just give us a heads up on where things might be going. So, any any objections to continuing on with having them come for a meeting next week?
And Brett, this is, I'm it obviously would have to be virtual.
It will be, it's very same si- situation.
Yeah, I'll ask Lauren to post that. And you, Brett, you also mentioned the budget subcommittee. Did you, did you have a a target for that, or did you wanna hold off a little bit?
Um. I think maybe, let's hold off a week and and make a call on that.
Maybe set a date on April the eighth, so.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, um. Uh, Pat, just let me know that um the town has a restriction of only one Zoom meeting per night, and there might be a zoning board meeting. On the eighth, so we'll have to work that out. Um. So, we'll 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 figure that out, and so you might, you might see a change on that meeting for me. Okay, um, we are gonna need executive session this evening. I'll need Mr. Means, um Neely to stick around in the school committee. Um, so we will move into uh executive session, um for the purpose of discussing strategy, we affected collective bargaining or litigation. Um, or other personnel um matters. Um. And we will not leave executive session except for the purpose of adjournment. Um, looking for a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Lisa. Second from Becky, uh roll call vote. Brett Ogil, I.
Lisa Brown, I.
Becky Churniac, I.
Julie Mulder, I.
Kelly, I think you were muted.
Sorry, Kelly Grady, I.
Thank you. Um, and with that, um, we are, we are leaving open session.